I'm going to call the board on the Silver Lake February 27 meeting. Area 58 is recording us, thank you very much. Um, excuse me.
Paul, it's very hard to hear down here, I don't know if it's the lower, I guess.
Okay.
Down or...
Mr. Wallace is on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. To begin with, I would like to welcome our new member. Chris, thank you so much for stepping in and taking Jim to the spot for the remainder of his term. Would you, I came in late, did you have a chance to meet everybody? Would you like us to just go around the committee?
I believe I know almost everyone in the room, yeah. I've met them tonight before.
Okay, I just want to be sure. All righty, thank you. Welcome. You picked a great meeting to start. I give you so much credit.
All right, get into it.
Your background seems well though, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will open it up to the public if anybody has any, anything they'd like to say before we get started. I will tell you, once we begin the discussion, anybody who wants to move in, ask a question, what have you, I'm gonna ask that you raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. I really want the committee and the administration to have, you know, a robust discussion and I would prefer not to have interruptions, though I'm very happy to have anybody speak if they feel I would like to. So, seeing none at this point? Okay. Let's take a look at the minutes from our last meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes from our Thursday, February 8 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained. Chris, do you...
Do you need a motion on the executive session as well?
On the ground, all right. I know you want...
I'm sorry, Jason.
You want me to move on the executive session as well?
Please, thank you.
Make a motion to accept and hold the executive session minutes from our Thursday, February 8 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you. All right. So, moving on to the purpose of tonight's meeting, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody involved in the preparation of the materials you shared with us ahead of time. I know it took a lot of thought, a lot of work. It's obviously not a pleasant exercise, but the presentation of it was outstanding, given some historical numbers and some more current numbers, and the reasoning next to the items was very clear. So, I want to thank everybody for really positioning the committee to jump into the discussion with some, you know, some substantial thoughts from you folks ahead of time, so I do appreciate that very much.
Well, I'll just begin. Again, in order to go back and to try to look at many cuts, it is a, it is a difficult and painful process. Over the years, we have made many cuts, and as a former Dear School Committee member used to say, there are only so many paper cut, paper clips that can be cut, and we have indeed cut all of our paper clips. So, there's really not a lot that we can look at at this point. So, this really took a tremendous amount of creativity and time, and I really want to reach out and just especially thank Christine Healy, the business manager, Michaela Gill, high school principal, Jim DuPeel, middle school principal, Steve Pelau, our tech director, Cara Diego, our facilities manager, Joe Prue, and our assistant superintendent, and Marie Graeber, our special ed director. We did spend a lot of quality time together, and I have to say, as a team, everybody really was willing to roll up their sleeves and work together to get this done. We looked at all areas of our budget, nothing was sacrosanct. Everything was looked at: supplies, technology, maintenance, transportation, textbooks, programs, and staff. One of the things that we did look at again is late buses. Again, there is only so many areas we can look at. This is not an area that any of us are comfortable with, but there are only so many areas that there's even a possibility of making cuts at this point, other than staff. We currently have five late buses that run after school. They go three days a week. It supplies transportation for after-school support and enrichment programs. About 100 students a day ride the late buses, or five buses. Our problem is the geographic range and size of our district. In Plington, in general, there may only be 10 students on a bus that can hold 60 to 70, but because Plington is spread out and large, the students can still be riding the bus for an hour to an hour and a half to get home. So, we're trying to figure out, is there any way we could combine buses? But again, when you're already keeping kids on a bus after school for an extra hour and a half to get home from a late bus, it is difficult. One area we thought of as a possibility is to decrease after-school transportation two days a week, or to, again, attempt to combine and drop a bus and only run four buses, and maybe do something where Plington students closer to Kingston line could ride with Kingston, those closer to Halifax line could ride with Halifax, but again, it's sort of a time issue. Other areas that we have looked at, we reviewed all staff of savings and insurance. When we built version one of the budget, we expected it to be a 10% increase in the Mayflower Municipal. Those were the numbers that we had received. At the last school committee meeting, you may remember Charlie Seelig let us know that he was looking at more 8%, that they'd had a meeting. He then went back and sent us the actual rates of increases per plan, and we actually charted out all of our staff, the current plans that they're in, based on their increases, and we found not only the savings we had mentioned last time, some additional savings, because like the rate saver program was only a 4.6, 4%. So, we actually literally put all this staff into the things, and we can see we can save that $111,000, which is a huge savings we were trying to come up with from the cuts. We also did a lot of review of our actual personnel and all positions of funding sources. We set clear limits on the steps and lanes of hires, as well as reviewing our Title I and Special Education grant opportunities. By doing this, again, we were able to recognize some additional personnel savings. I mentioned last month, we did have a retirement. We looked a little bit closer at the position, and we believe we could take $25,000 off, not just $20,000, to replace that position. All of the recommended staff are still residing in this budget, okay? We did not recommend any cuts of current staff. What we did was, we looked at the positions that we recommended as replacements, as a starting place, then we don't have to deal with unemployment or cutting any current staff positions. Again, this is our first attempt at cuts. We realize you may send us back and say, no, you have to look at other things or look at current staff, but that's what we attempted to do. Our goal is to continue to provide the best fiscally responsible educational system possible and to remain competitive in charter and private schools. As I've spoken about, and for those of you who have some of the graphs that we've put together, we are still losing children to charter schools. As we cut programs and as we cut opportunities for our students, I believe more students will then go to charter schools, which will cause a greater decrease in our charter 70 funds and more loss of money. The last page of the packet includes some additional thoughts regarding potential budget savings. We have just received a retirement at our office. It's a shared cost position. It is a .6 bookkeeper. We have looked at that, and that is a position that we believe we could potentially cut from the budget. The position is listed as a potential cut for the savings of $28,000. Silver Lake pays $14,000 of that position, okay? So, it'll be savings of $14,000 from Silver Lake, and then the other balance of $14,000 is split between Halifax, Kingston, and Plington. We have a new accounting software, and we recognize that with that, we believe we can provide the same services, do the same work, because we're saving some time. What was your percentage efficiencies of...
Some efficiencies have been created through the use of the new system.
That's how much that says.
And it's true.
Yeah. So, you know, we believe that that is a position that we would not replace, that we would be taken. Again, not, not anyone would lose a job, but it would be a retirement that we would not be replacing. That would cause us, though, just so we all understand, that is a shared cost position, so if the committee would like us to look further at that, we would call a shared cost meeting and re-vote whether or not other committees would agree with that. Some other ideas of potential savings and/or revenue increases in the future, we'll take some time to research and implement, but again, to be honest with you, we have really stretched trying to find ways to cut the budget or increase revenue. So, these were just some possible ideas. I'm not saying I recommend any of them, I'm just out of ideas, to be honest with you. One thing that has been talked about previously is looking at a food service program. Do we want to look at the possibility of going to a program like Chartwell's or some of the other programs that are out there? It is a program, it is something we have talked about before. I don't know if the committee would be interested in us looking at that as an option. Currently, in terms of the budget, the food service director's salary is in the budget. We voted that last year, if you remember, to get it out of the red. We also pay the insurance for all the employees that are our cafeteria workers come out of the Silver Lake budget. Currently, that runs a little over $150,000 that we spend for our food service program right now.
How much does it cost?
I have talked only, you know, just because it comes up periodically with other colleagues, there are districts that it costs nothing. They, you know, Chartwell basically comes in, they run it, it's their employees, you know, the amount is charged. It's sort of a balanced program, I guess, you know? They, they charge and they, they have the amount of employees in the food service there. I know some districts that are very happy, having gone that route, and I know some districts that are very unhappy about it, but that's only sort of circumspect. I have not really sat and sent out an email and had it as a real discussion point with my colleagues. But, you know, again, I honestly, I'm not sure what else we can do. So, it's just, it's a, it's a topic that's been in discussion. The cafeteria has worked really hard to get us out of deficit, you know, they really have, and I really want to recognize that. You know, if you remember, we had been in pretty severe deficit for years. Davis has worked really hard to get us to be in the black. We did successfully go in the black last year. Again, we did pick up the cost of salary, though. So, you know, again, it's just food for thought, not necessarily a recommendation, I'm just sort of throwing some ideas out there.
And there'd be a cost for that service, though, correct?
I, I don't believe there is, but I have not looked at a contract. As I said, if you would like me to take a little time and just even think about it, I don't, it would not be possible to do for next year. It would be a down-the-road thing, and I would really want to make sure that we are making a good decision, so I'd like to have some time to look at it, if you would like me to do that. I'm not sure it's a good idea. You know, I think we do a pretty decent job with it, and I know we have a cafeteria that's worked really hard at it, but again, it, you know, when I'm trying to find money, I'm just not sure where else to look at this point.
But, right now, I didn't realize the insurance is also coming out of our budget, not out of the revolving fund. So, we're, we're pretty much funding this, all the staff. I mean, the salary is still coming out for the workers, still coming out, but...
Yes, salary's coming out of the revolving fund, but insurance comes out of Silver Lake.
I personally think that is something that should be investigated.
I'm in faith, I'm in agreement with you. Having said that, if it's not something that could be implemented for the budget that we're discussing now, I, I agree with you, though, I think it's something that's probably going to need to be explored.
I'd be happy to do that, you know, maybe later in the spring, you know, we could look at it. As I said, it may turn out to be a terrible idea, I honestly don't know, but I, you know, again, I know there are some districts that are very happy with it, really made a difference for them, and some that I heard the kids aren't happy with the food, but I'm, I'm not sure that they're happy with it.
The 150, just to clarify, was the entire out of our budget, including the director's position, which is how much?
Lower 60.
Yeah, and then the, and the rest of it's medical benefits.
Yeah.
Do we make price control on the meals? Do we charge an extra quarter, or something on loaded that adds up on the number of meals per day?
We have looked at the cost of the meals, and we did an increase, last year, I, was it last year? I think it was last year we did an increase to try to offset. Our problem is, is the more you increase the cost, the less the parents and want to spend the money for, so they buy less food, so then the cost continues to go up, but we don't sell as many lunches. So, we, we're at a tipping point, Chris, to be honest with you. I think we're at a pretty good cost. We're pretty much average around the areas that we charge.
I'm just trying to say...
Yeah, no, no, as I said, I'm...
The charge...
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
I mean, tonight is about, as every budget discussion is, throwing something on the wall and seeing if it sticks, you know, just, that's what we're doing.
This last item is actually due to our new school committee member's idea. So, Chris Eklund, I was chatting with him, and one of the things he mentioned was the idea of looking at our student parking fees as a potential for funding some of our cost for parking lots. We currently charge $50 for parking for the year, and we, you know, that money is used to help us offset, like when we have to paint the new lines or, you know, update the handicaps and curbs and some of those other things. You know, Chris, Chris mentioned, you know, maybe that would be a possible source of some additional revenue, is to help offset some of the costs that we've dealt with, you know, the pumping out of storm drains that we have and some of those other costs. Christine and I have had some initial conversations about it, and Christine texted her colleagues to find out what the fees were, and she sent it out to 16.
I received 16 responses, and the fees go from zero to $200. So, it's kind of all over the place, so that's about 16, seven do not charge anything.
Paul?
Sure. Maureen.
Anything to do with parking fees or fees that associated with our students goes to the subcommittee for review, and just to let you know, Chris, in the past few years, we have increased greatly our activity fees for the kids. You've had children, I'm sure you're aware of it, and, and we did look at parking fees, and we're at, I'm at the point right now, and I'm co-chair of that committee, that I think we're feeing our parents to death, and we're trying to avoid having to see that happen. We do have a SOLO project that Mr. Getabody has inspired us with, and we're hoping if that goes through, that may bring some revenue in for our parking area, which would help maintain the parking facilities. So, I would, I would not be interested in seeing any fees raised to the families.
My first, my chief...
I would say that, which one? You. Thank you very much. We have a spot on every bus for every student that we're paying for transportation, and I realize the privilege of driving to school for seniors is important, is part, and my kids did it, but as far as the privilege, it is something, it is a privilege, that it can be revoked because of behavior and everything else, but I think that Chris has got a pretty good idea, especially if the range goes up to $200. The parking lot was not designed for parent drop-offs, and it was not, it was designed for the buses, and we have a traffic issue in the morning at 7:30 as it is, and if a few kids opted out and decided to ride the bus, that would only help the traffic situation, too. I think it's something we should consider.
Mark, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask Christine, how many of those 16 were more than $50?
So, seven were zero, four were 50, one was 100, three was 150, one was 200.
Mark, can I ask, you first, did you have a question?
I do. I don't know. Mike, do you know how many spots we have on campus?
1,000.
Are you just throwing that number out, or is that a real number?
When we did the layout, it was just a little under 1,000, if you count the back part.
Those are student parking spots?
No, it's the whole parking lot.
Yeah, okay. So, do we know how many student parking spots we have?
We have about 200, so we pay about 50 bucks.
That's 2/3 of the class.
So, you're talking like the other...
Well, again, you know...
I just want to know the whole...
Yep, and to this point, it would go, it would go to the safer committee, you know, that's where we would look at something like this. Again, it was, it was an idea, I thought it was a creative idea that Chris came up with. I included it, you know, as part of the package, so, again, I think we've all looked at ways for revenue. I mean, we're not a business, we're really not into developing revenue, we're just trying to support the budget and maintain the budget, so...
Well, my thought is that, as I was mentioning, riding to school is a privilege, so, you know, even though there are a lot of fees, this is not a fee that is critical, given that we have spots for kids on the buses. So, I would be in favor of increasing the fee. Because driving...
I don't, I will...
So, do we want to ask the safer committee to put that on their agenda to give some thought to?
Yeah, you got it.
Sure. So, having gone forward with that, the last item that I had mentioned, sort of in my summary, was, you may remember, Pembroke came in, Erin O'Beam, who is the superintendent of Pembroke. Pembroke has set up that all students who apply to go to a vocational school have to apply to Silver Lake also, and if they get into our program, the superintendent would approve our program, not another program that they may also get into, South Shore Vocational Technical Program, for instance. So, we don't know yet what that's going to mean. This is the first year we're doing it. What we have done in the past, and it has worked for us, is we assume our revenue will be about the same number of students graduating, about the same number will be coming in. That's how we've always built our revenue. We don't know how many students will apply, you know? We don't know how many students will get in, so that's sort of how we've always judged it. Sometimes we're a little low, sometimes we're a little high, more often than not, we're pretty darn close, okay? With this new system, potentially, we will have more students. Whether they stay with us, pass through for a year, is still up for grabs, because we might not offer a program that they like, like they may choose another program that we don't have available, but it has the potential to be a cost increase for us. We kept our revenue the same this year. I think it's fiscally responsible. We're hesitant to promise revenue that we just don't know, okay? But, in the future, in the future, after we get through this initial year and we have a sense of how this works, that could be possibly some additional money. We receive anywhere from $9,000 to $10,000-ish a student?
Sorry, about $9,000.
Each year, the state sets a number. So, again, I honestly don't know if this will be an increase, but I did, just want to let you know that it has potential down the road for us. So, that's pretty much all the ideas and the thoughts that we had. So, just to go through the cuts that we had listed, and again, this is, I asked Steve to come, so we can speak to any technology questions you have, and Michaela and Jim obviously didn't have a choice. So, in terms of the principal's office, again, our cuts have really cut pretty deep at this point. There really is not a lot of money left to cut. You can see, you know, how we've been sort of playing around with the number over the years, you know, we were originally at 15, 16, 49,000. You know, after the cuts, if we take those out, we're down to 43,000, and needless to say, things have not decreased in terms of the cost. Teaching supplies, that would be toner, paper, art supplies, technology, engineering supplies. Again, that would be a reduction of a little over 6,000. We split it between the middle school and the high school, so you can see. Again, there's not a whole lot of areas we can cut any longer. Think of John Creed's paperclips, and by the way, he did give permission to use both, I just call him. He was, he was pleased, I thought, of them. Professional development workshops, again, we take 1,000 off. Part of our problem with making these cuts is we've also getting cuts in grants, so we're just really sort of narrowing some of those things down. The other area I'm a little nervous about in this is that we have Niasse coming up, and we will need to have some teachers attend some professional development for it, and there will be costs associated with that process. In terms of textbooks, we've cut about 8,500. It would be a reduction in some of the ELA texts that we had hoped to upgrade. Instructional hardware and software, printer supplies, software hardware, assistive technology, that's about $20,400. Library, a reduction in some of our books, teen health, wellness, database, web subscription, ebooks, et cetera, and reduction in new titles, about $3,700. AV, that's about $5,000. Reduction in replacement of audio equipment, microphones, slide advancers, new technology. The middle school, thought about a reduction in transportation for some of their music festivals, that's a reduction of 500. Middle school and high school, again, this is what we talked about with late buses. Again, this is one that I realize is a sensitive subject, and I am concerned about it, but there's just not too many areas left for us to look at. Maintenance of ground, we are hopeful that with the new skid steer, that we'll be able to complete some of the work currently contracted out for sanding and sanding, and we've reduced that line item by 10,000. We're hopeful that the new skid steer will be able to provide us with some savings, assuming the capital plan goes through. Maintenance of equipment, some reduction in musical instrument repairs and science equipment repairs of 500. Acquisition of equipment, which is wellness of fine art, reduction in the purchases of IHT, I've totally drawn a blank by what that is.
It's the devices for wellness classes where they can monitor heart rates and follow their fitness.
Thank you. And cardio machines, AV and art equipment. Replacement of equipment, this is wellness equipment, copiers, breath and calculators, band instruments. That's a, that's a decrease of about $16,000. This front page of reductions is $98,187.
Can I start from the... Does the committee want to discuss this first page tier one cuts before moving on, or do we want to have...
I'd like to finish tier one at least, because this is tier one on the back as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Oh, it's total, okay. Yeah, sorry. So, on the back, you may remember, I mentioned last month, we had a staff retirement, so we had taken $20,000 out. We looked at the position, we believe we can reduce it by $25,000 for savings in terms of a new person coming in. As I mentioned earlier, Christine and I spent a lot of time really looking at our staff, looking at some of the steps and lanes of hires, making sure we had all of our funding opportunities through grants and tier one, correct? We believe we can cut the overall personnel by 70,000.
What do you mean by that?
So, our personnel salary line item?
Yeah.
We looked at everybody that is there, we looked at where they're going, potentially, with educational steps and lanes. We looked at new hires. We looked at people that are partially funded or are funded through grants, making sure all of our Is are dotted, Ts are crossed. We believe we can come up with 70,000 in additional savings.
So, applying the steps and lanes as they stand now, well, and anybody going forward?
Right, yeah.
Doing that now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I understand what you're saying. When you say, I apologize.
No, 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 I'm probably calling you, yes, sorry.
No, I heard cut, decreased staff, I...
No, 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 we're, we worked, we worked really hard. Again, this is not cutting any current staff. There's no current staff cut here.
Yeah, okay.
Did I miss anything?
This is applying new steps.
Yeah.
And then just some of the stage funding and new staff, like is where they may enter the schedule, steps and...
Okay. So, it's... Oh, Mark, I'm sorry.
Bill, obviously, personnel is your largest budget line item. Could you give us an idea, on the previous ones, you gave us an idea, what our budget amounts were as we were going through this, and what, so we can sort of get an idea what kind of percentages you're sliding off of these other ones? What kind of number do you pay for personnel? I mean, a reduction of 70,000, I'm trying to figure out what percentage did you reduce your personnel?
I'm trying to understand what your question is. I would have to go back to the budget, because their salaries are in so many different categories between middle school and high school.
I mean, it is your largest expense, followed by your next...
If you look at the first one, let's just personnel, all steps and lanes, well, that's the increase.
It's, it's huge. I mean, this is a very small, I don't even imagine it's 1%.
Yeah, it's pretty modest, but our staff is...
And that's to my point, so the people don't look and say, where did you find $70,000? You found $70,000 by shaving off less than...
Thank you, that's a great point, Mark.
And the same with you get to the insurance situation coming up. I think people should know that it's not, just if it's a big number, doesn't mean it's not a small percentage.
No, that's a very good point, Mark. Thank you. That's a good clarification. And then, that's...
No, I just, you know, before we move on to anything else, I would like us to just revisit sort of where are we trying to get to with all of these numbers? Like, I know we talked about them at the last meeting, where we need to be, but I feel like we should revisit that before we start talking about...
Do we, do we want to just wrap up this one page?
Just at some point, I want to make sure that we do that.
Yeah. Again, and then, in terms of insurance reductions, we actually went through, looked at everybody's plan, looked at the actual percentage increase, went through, plotted, based on the information Charlie Seelig was kind enough to share with us, and we have reductions that we believe are, okay, of $111,000. If we were, if the committee were to choose the entire front page and these three items on the back page, that savings for the budget would be $304,187. one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I just wanted to mention with the health insurance, we're having a meeting next week with Mayflower Municipal Health Group on Wednesday to vote the final numbers. And this is based on what's been presented so far.
It looks like you've calculated out that one percent of the budget is equal to two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars, approximately?
Yes.
So, with the two-hundred-six-thousand dollars that was saved from this staff retirement, the review of lanes and steps, and the insurance reductions, you've gotten pretty close to a point eight of a percent, just in those cuts right there, which gets us down to about like three-one-eight.
Three-point-one.
So, I just wanted to bring this to the committee's mind, because this is areas we don't have to deliberate on. It's pretty clear that we can accept these fines and appreciate that work. Just wanted to put that out there before we start making decisions and cutting things that we're going to have to argue about.
And for anybody who doesn't know what Jason's referring to, on the very back page, it has impacted grant budget cuts on assessment. So, that's where we try to make it as simple and clear as possible, so you can see the impact on the budgets. If you'd like, I can talk a little bit, and maybe the school committee members that attended could help me with our meetings with finance in terms of the numbers, if you'd like, if we go down that road, what they were looking for.
Yeah, and I, I think when we walked out of here last time, our last meeting, we asked for administration to come up with around four-hundred thousand in cuts. This is, this is what we've been given so far to discuss.
I'll let you start. Sure. So, we've attended, let's say, we, a variety of school committee members and myself, and Christine and Jill, I have met with all three finance committees. We met in Kingston, week ago?
Fifteen.
Okay, a week or so ago, and, two weeks ago. And we met with the finance committee, we reviewed our budget. Again, I believe Kingston Finance Committee has asked us to try to make cuts of four-hundred-thousand. Okay, yes, and I think Laura was there, and Eric was there. I don't know if you'd like to add anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. Okay, so that was, that was Kingston. We met with the Halifax Finance Committee. Halifax Finance Committee didn't give us as an exact cost, what they were hoping for by comparative, and I apologize if I get it wrong, was that the increase of their assessment from last year to this year would be somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand? I'm glad I got that one right, too. Okay, which will equal about the same cut as Kingston is looking for. It would be equal to approximately the four-hundred-thousand dollar mark, was what both, both the towns looked for. We met last evening, Jason and Maureen were both there with Plinton, and Plinton is just the beginning stages of their budget, and the timeline is always a little different than the other towns. Steve was there. They didn't really have numbers to recommend to us, because I think it's early in their budgeting process, but I believe Nate said that he appreciated any efforts we could make to reduce our budget. Again, Plinton is on the receiving end, that's the greatest increase for Plinton this year, because they have almost a one percent increase in their assessment, because I think they have ten extra kids. So, it's kind of a funny, so their assessment.
I didn't know.
Yeah. The assessment's a little higher for Plinton, but they have a higher percentage of students. So, Plinton's didn't have an actual number, but I think would appreciate any cuts we could make. Does that help?
Well, I'm still not clear on the, sort of, what's the number? Like, when you said four-hundred thousand for Kingston, did you mean for the Silver Lake budget?
Yes, the silver, yeah.
For the, okay.
Yep, yep.
Not just the, because that, because that, I needed to talk about K E S K I S as well.
I'm only dealing with Silver Lake, I'm sorry, just clarifying.
So, so you're saying four-hundred for Kingston, a hundred would be?
Nope. Four-hundred from the overall version one budget that we shared.
Okay.
And that's for both Kingston and Halifax. They just said it in a different way.
Maureen first, and then Jason. I'll defer to Jason.
All right, so, I, I understand we have to balance the financial needs of the towns with the educational needs of, of our students. So, I know there's goals and there's aims, dollars-wise, but I think that we need to be mindful of the educational goals of the district as well. And, and that's our primary role, and their primary role is coming up with the figures and numbers, and we're trying to collaborate to the best of our abilities to meet those needs of the towns, what they can sustain, what they can support, but also giving the best possible education here. So, I just want us to be mindful, that's our role.
Agreed, I, if you don't mind, I completely agree, and I think that was very well said. We, we do need to be collaborative, though. I mean, we sat through the Halifax meeting last night, and it's math. You know, the money's not there. You can't overdraw a town when the money's just not there. The Halifax meeting last night with the finance committee and selectmen was very enlightening. I'm not saying, you know, four-hundred thousand even, I'm one committee member to begin with. I'm not saying three-hundred thousand, I'm not saying five-hundred thousand. I think we need to come up with a reasonable budget that we think our towns will agree to, and, and go from there, and try and do as much as we can with the kids. You know, it's, please.
So, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind, that, you know, selectmen, boards of selectmen, you know, typically put together budgets for fire department, police department, we're doing schools. The one, I think, the biggest challenge that we have is we have competition. The town, the police department, fire department, they don't have competition. It's not like if we reduce police, they're going to go call another police department. Now, that, that doesn't work that way. But when we reduce programs here, people leave here and go somewhere else, and it hurts us, it takes away from our budget. So, we're in a very unique and, and difficult, challenging position, I think, in terms of schools, with charter schools being in, in the area. So, I think, for me personally, when we're looking at cuts, I want to keep that very much at the front of my mind, and make sure that we're not hitting things that, you know, we want to, in my mind, least affect the things that, that kids are involved in, and what are important to them in, in teaching, because, and to parents. I mean, you know, we want to make this as transparent as possible, and, and not affect people as much to chase them away.
You know, one of the selectmen last night in Halifax, I'm, I'm not going to go on and on about Halifax, but somebody said something about cost-effective, and I had turned to Joy and said, well, it's going to be educationally effective, you know, so having said that, that's, that's what I thought. I just sort of interrupted you.
Oh, no, someone, yeah.
And, you know, I just want to clarify, my goal in asking that question is not to let's get to this finish line, but, but just to be mindful of, you know, wherever the towns would like us to be, so that when we start to think about this, we can kind of keep that in mind, because we do want to have sort of a balance, not that we need to get to that, that place. So, you know, I'm.
I think we're on the same.
Yes, absolutely.
We work, we work with the finance committees, we do not work for the finance committees.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question, the spreadsheet here. The after-proposed cuts column, that one million, three seventy-nine, is that supposed to be the total of those numbers there?
Which page do you want?
I want the first one.
The first page? It's a spreadsheet that the after-proposed cuts are totaled, you decided up and it didn't?
Yeah.
So, we're going to get back?
I was double-checking myself, I came closer to a million. And I did the same thing on the column for the seventeen, eighteen budget, see what that number is, trying to see where we are, year over year.
I had, sorry, I did not double-check the spreadsheet, I haven't, I didn't do that piece.
I wasn't sure if they were visible or hidden in there or something.
No, there aren't, as far as I know, there are no invisible lines.
Okay.
But what we're dealing with is the cut number, so that number, that one point three seven, is it part of our cut calculation, so I'm sorry.
So, can I just ask? Are the columns, Chris, did you do the math on the columns in the red? Do those?
I did the red ones, and I was looking at the seventeen, eighteen budget, relatively after proposed cuts numbers, because some of them are still increasing. You know, the, the second line, twenty-three hundred, teaching, it went from one fifty, budget one was one sixty-six, but we're still going to one fifty-nine, so it's an increase of nine grand. You know, the next line is twenty-five grand, went to thirty-one, we're cutting down twenty-nine, so it's still a four-thousand-dollar increase.
Just less than our original version one budget.
Yeah, exactly, so I was trying to just compare year over year, what was the change? I think my number's even around seven percent.
The professional development, remember, a lot of that has to do with the training for the, the.
Oh, sure, no, it's just, those are, you know, small numbers, but, you know, the hardware instructional, twenty-five percent, and we cut it back twenty grand, but that's still a four-thousand-dollar increase, three to ten percent, that actually line item. So, for me, I'm new here, so forgive me, you know, line item may increase by, by more than ten percent. Maybe I just need to be educated where it is.
And I, and I have to say, that, looking at this quickly, I agree with what Chris is saying, because what this says is proposed budget, and then af, and we're, let's go on where we're actually starting from, and then after proposed cuts, yet we're still increasing almost every one of these line items, and I think that's the part that's a little confusing when you look at that.
Yeah, I'm trying to digest each piece. Some of them are small, but precise wise, it adds up, yeah.
All right, okay. Okay, just, I don't, something I want to show the members.
Yep.
So, if our budget follows the inflation rate, that, that's exceeding the inflation rate by two times, obviously, you've got an issue. I think that we understand that money isn't worth what it was yesterday, but certainly not what it was last year. Things don't, you can't buy the same thing for the same money. I think I'd like to remind people that even though we have an increase in the budget, it should be within reason to an inflation rate that we have experienced, that we'll experience, projected forward.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. If we, tier one. Do we want to stop at this point and talk about tier one, before moving on to tier two?
Sure.
Okay. Do we want to go line by line, or do we want to just flag?
That last year.
I think it worked well, too, but I just.
Do we want to start with the ones that are on the second page, though, the column with Jimmy? Two-hundred-six thousand, do we all agree on those?
Well, they're, they're math.
Right, I know, but I'm just, so we're all aware, that's the starting point we're starting from, is two-hundred-six thousand.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got two-hundred-six in the bucket.
Good job, everyone.
All righty, principal's office. Any discussion there? And I certainly welcome you folks to, you know, participate by all means as well. I mean, it's shaving supplies.
I make a motion to accept the fifteen-hundred dollars from line twenty-two hundred.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. All right, teaching supplies, again, shaving supplies.
I make a motion to accept both proposals from line twenty-three hundred for a total of six thousand, four hundred, ten dollars.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Professional development, the decrease of two thousand?
I move that we do not touch that line, twenty-three hundred and fifty, for middle school and high school.
Second.
Any, any discussion on that? Go ahead, Jason.
So, with some of the grant funding potentially running out for professional development at the district level, I think it's crucial that we have these funds supplied, so we can do in-house professional development for our teachers.
Thank you for that. Any other comments on that one? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay.
I make a motion to accept the total of eighty-five hundred dollars from line twenty-four-hundred in textbooks.
Second. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Jason.
We've tossed textbooks down the road for ten years. I don't want to make the point where, gee whiz, someday we might plot on a line, okay? That's something that's kind of been taken in the backseat a lot too much. Don't worry, I understand, I know I will be voted against, but.
Oh, no, absolutely, that's, yeah, and I'm glad you did. Any other comments on that? Would the principals like to comment it on? You don't have to, I'm just wondering if you'd like to.
I do.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Okay. All right, instructional hardware, software, over the lower twenty grand.
I make a motion to accept the total of, I believe that is twenty thousand, four hundred, from line twenty-four, fifty.
There was something.
Okay, so I have a question, Steve, Joy, principals, whoever can answer this. These cuts are in printer supplies, software, hardware, and assistive technology, correct? So, the assistive technology, are those things like assistive in terms of those with disabilities? Who need those?
That is correct. It would be, an example would be, if a student might have a communication or student needs a.
Screen reader or something.
Or something like that, or larger monitors.
And how much of, of these cuts of that, a lot of money there, would be assistive technology, just curious?
Twenty-five hundred, a thousand at the middle school, and a fifteen hundred at the high school.
And how important, I mean, I know from working in IT, those are very key and crucial, and sometimes legally required, so.
Right, based on, meaning assistive technology was never broken down in the budget before, wherever people could find money, they took it. They had that in the budget, but based on expenses, we've seen for the time it's been in the budget, we feel we can comfortably reduce cuts without impacting what would legally be, or what would be necessary for students.
Okay. There was actually an excellent question. Any other comments?
I have a question in terms of the, the budget increase here, net base, I guess, after these reductions of two-seventy-four to three-nineteen.
Yes.
Where does this put you in terms of a technology fund? Getting close to where you want to be, or you're still miles behind? And that's a forty-five thousand dollar increase, like eighteen percent of that budget line.
That is correct. We have, we have seen an increase in the cost of the Chromebooks that we use for our one-to-one program, so that increased it. This year, we proposed doing a four-year warranty on the new Chromebooks, which added approximately thirty thousand. If that were to be funded, the parents would pay back the cost of the warranty, rather than going out and buying a separate warranty from where they have, which we asked they do. It would be paid back to the school, so that money would come back to us, but it wouldn't be coming back in this budget cycle. So, it would be an initial outlay, and then hopefully, it would be self-funding from there on out. So, that's about a thirty thousand dollar increase in the budget. We also were, last year, we were required, because of some last-minute, I won't go into details, but we had to replace our firewalls and upgrade our filtering system, because the company that made the firewall all of a sudden gave us a month and set up, by the way, it's not always supported.
Yes.
So, that, that's the majority of the expenses.
The proposed technology stuff, is any of this money connected to med plans?
I'm sorry.
Is any of the cuts we're talking about here connected to ed plans in particular? Does anybody?
Ed plans?
Yeah.
Not at all.
This is a, the cuts in here, based on what we've expended this year, looking at the trends, I'm fairly comfortable that this will have a minimal impact on the technology.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All righty, library.
I move that we keep line twenty-five hundred as is.
Without the cuts?
Without the cuts.
Second.
Discussion on that? Go ahead, Mark.
As much as I like libraries, I think your, your reduction is significant, is probably necessary, if you're pulling things out of these line items, you're not going to be, you're going to have to find someplace else to collect that cash, if you want to meet your goal. I think, I, I will not support, I would, I would support taking this reduction.
Any other comments, Dave?
I would not support taking this reduction, since it is in teen health and wellness that they're listing here, and knowing our social emotional state of our student population. they listing here, and knowing our social emotional state of our student population, this is something that should be supported for all our students.
I'm sorry, Eric, and then?
So, the teen health and wellness, it's a database, so does that, will this cut, because I do hear what you're saying, and I would be equally concerned, but by taking away that database, does that affect anything in terms of teen health and wellness, or is it, I'm not sure what that database would be, but.
So they use the database for research projects within the health curriculum throughout the year. So, they can certainly find other avenues for some of the things that they do.
Right.
But when I had a conversation with the librarian, she said that it's, obviously this database is the most current information, and it's used for those curricular reasons, to keep the kids current, without, you know, laboring it, you know, but she also said that if she had to make the cut, that she would try to find other resources so that it would have a limited impact on what they do in the health classroom.
Can I support what Jim just said for a second? From a middle school perspective, databases, especially around the area of wellness, creates a safer avenue for students to do research on topics that, if searched in a broader web-based sense, would probably lead them to some more dangerous findings, could impact their wellness in negative ways.
But I think that we have, we have gateways in place for that with the technology in schools.
Yeah, in school.
Are the, are these databases they're using from home? Or is it something they only use in school?
No, they can access the library information through the library website.
So, they would be able to go to places you wouldn't want them to from home, or they go through the same firewall channels?
I think through their, their account, they can then go through the, they can log into their account, and I think they can go into the library website from home, which I know they can do that, and then they, I believe they can access the databases all the way down to even like our foreign language online programs.
My question would be, you brought this forward as the representative of the middle school to, to us as the item that you proposed cutting in this program, so obviously you felt that it was the, an item that should be suggested for a cut if you need to make one, and also, what kind of utilization do you have? Any records of the kids actually using this site or the existing site?
Yes, well, through my conversation with Vicki Wright, who's our school librarian, she said that they use it through every quarter as part of a curricular project that they work on. But, again, she told me that she could make other resources available to try to supplant that database, and that if given the need for a cut, that she could make another, other avenues available.
My other question is, we cut a line item, that all it means is we're reducing that particular line item, doesn't mean that particular program, that is at the discretion of our administrators, so even though these are targeted items, and I appreciate that, the librarian may make a choice to keep this in and, of course, cut out some other resource within the library.
But I think, but, when I am making my decision as an individual this evening, I'm making it based on what's being shared with me, so I would have to make my decision believing that it's the website. I know what you're saying, Mark, but I'm gonna, I guess worst case scenario, my mind is this is what's going to be, but also that that is what is recommended by, by Jim and a lot of it.
Right.
All cuts are difficult, and all the conversations are tough, and we're here making tough choices about tough things, and even the conversations with Vicki is a tough conversation, and we're all trying to make the best choices to minimize the impact of the cut.
Yep.
So I understand the difficult conversation.
Yeah. Understood, and thank you for that.
So, again, I'd like to move that we reiterate that we keep line twenty-five hundred library as is.
Second. And before we, I take a vote, Joy, want to say something?
The only thing I was going to suggest is if we are looking for a way to make some cuts, but to keep that database, instead of cutting two thousand from the middle school, I assume if we cut it about a thousand, the database could be recommended to keep, and we could still make a cut of seventeen hundred. Instead of cutting thirty-seven hundred, we could cut twenty-seven hundred. So, it would just be another approach if you so chose.
I don't want to touch the line at all.
I agree.
I appreciate that other option, don't want to touch it at all.
The motion is to keep it as is, we're not talking about, the motion hasn't been amended. All those in favor, the motion is, I believe, Maureen put forward?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, we need a.
Yeah.
Yep. I, I help Lisa for that.
So, which, yes first?
Hands up for.
Keeping it as is.
Keeping it as is.
Not making a cut.
For the motion, the motion was keeping it as is.
I like Joy's idea. Two, four, six, seven, eight.
Eight.
Time.
It's a time.
So, do we go back and talk more?
No. Motion passes. Doesn't it?
Not for, not for budget, no.
That's a pass by majority.
So, can I, can I make an amendment that we take this?
Oh, I'm thinking of you.
Take, accept the high school cuts, but, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, accept the high school proposed cuts, because this is in the middle school, correct? Okay. And then, they don't have the wellness database in the high school?
No, our proposed cuts are for new titles.
Okay, so then, I would make an amendment that we accept the seventeen hundred, but leave the two thousand back in the middle school.
Second. You could do Joy's suggestion, you could keep the health database in there, by only cutting the thousand.
Okay, so then, I would say let's accept one thousand dollars in cuts instead of the two thousand, but accept seventeen hundred for the high school level cuts.
You've amended your motion.
I have amended my motion.
I'm going to second your amended motion.
Okay.
Okay. We're about to vote this line item.
I'm still here.
All right. All those in favor of the newest motion? Aye. Okay. Opposed?
Do you oppose or what?
Maureen, Maureen.
I'm cool.
Maureen, Maureen's an abstainer.
Yes.
Okay. Audiovisual.
This represents fifty percent of the budget.
Replacement items, though. I mean, we live without, we can't.
Again, none of this is easy. We knew last year was tough, this year was going to be painful.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the cuts as they're presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah. Are any of these units, oh, I don't even know what they're called, for the blackboards in the classrooms, are any of those?
No, they're not the projectors in the classroom.
Okay. Because I know, I know what these are. Those are used in classrooms.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Including those, that's, I'm still.
Oh, no, don't worry, sorry. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Maureen will abstain.
Is there any opposition?
No.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to bring to the attention of the committee, the running tally, and please feel free to correct my hat if I'm wrong, but I believe we just surpassed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cuts at this point.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping the tally.
I'll count in the back page.
Counting the back page.
Counting the two oh six, of course.
Okay. The first transportation line, music festival, one.
I make a motion that we accept line thirty-one zero, thirty-three zero one as it's written.
I'll second it, but I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Why are you proposing to cut that? I know that you're a believer in, in the arts and music, and I want to just hear from someone who is a proponent.
I have a daughter who is in this program, and just as I have a daughter who will drive to this school, I will pay for her to go on this field trip.
Chris?
How many students in this program? We thought, a hundred or fifty?
In the middle school, probably fifty, going on the field trip.
Oh, this is multiple field trips.
Right.
I mean, I would say somewhere around four hundred and fifty students have access to these field trips, and I want to say maybe eighty go to Providence, and maybe a hundred or seventy. Yeah, I, it varies, maybe sixty to eighty go to.
But like most modern day field trips, this has educational value and purpose towards the musicals, correct?
Correct.
I will just point you, Maureen.
It will increase the cost of the field trip for the students.
The families already pay for the field trips, yes? This is just a subsidy.
Families pay for, yes, they do. This offsets some of the transportation costs, so that the cost is less.
Mark, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you have a sense for how?
I'm paying seventy dollars to send my daughter to the hall state tournament, or the one that's out in.
Yeah, usually, it's usually somewhere out in the, or the Massachusetts, and then they go to Salem afterwards, and then they come back later on.
Seventy dollars right after.
We're talking multiple field trips, right? So this is just.
Yeah, they go to Providence to perform in front of the Bruins, they go.
So this would be a couple bucks extra.
We already pay for it.
Right.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mark.
I'm just wondering if our students that join athletic events or tournaments pay for these trips, too?
They pay, but they pay through the revolving account, so if you go to, you know, track meet or something like that, you've paid by user fees, and then the user fees paid for the transportation, and, you know, referees, other things that have.
So, at the middle school, the user fees are not combined like they are at the high school?
I'm not sure what the user fees are at the high school. I can speak for the user fees at the middle school, which is, you have a separate user fee for athletics, for the drama, drama club has their own user fee, and the music department has different fees for.
But no user fee?
It's not a user fee in that sense, it's more, you know, an event fee, want to go on the, paying a fee. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
You're abstained?
Yep.
Okay. That passed. The late bus one.
I would like to make a motion that we do not take these reductions. Wholeheartedly second.
Second.
All right.
Fifth.
One hundred.
Okay.
For the late buses.
Officially, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
So we keep the late bus.
Correct. Yeah. I just.
Increase this one by about.
Okay, maintenance of grounds, the ten thousand dollar.
Make a motion to accept the cut of ten thousand dollars from line four two one one.
Second.
Could I ask one question? Why is it only on the high school side?
Because it's a field. The high school has a much larger budget for that.
Okay.
I think that's the difference. The middle school has a really minor budget for the.
They don't have the field to make.
But use of the skid steer. What it uses.
Fields under.
Well, you're not going to put a skid steer, why would you put a skid, a skid steer on the field? Like, what would you?
On the facility side. So, one of our initiatives is to buy the piece of equipment, the skid steer, and do some of this work in-house. So it increases our labor costs for our custodians, but the overall savings instead of contracting the event would be saved, and we're hoping, this evidently is an additional item that has not been considered by us, to increase the home repair initiative even further than what we were originally suggested by buying the skid steer to offset costs.
Correct.
So, that's what, is that correct, Joy?
I believe part of what we think the skid steer could do is to help us with sanding and salting the parking lot and not have to contract out for, I'm looking at our [inaudible] and I hope he doesn't mind.
No, that's fine. We, we contract out now in larger storms to move snow, so if we get the skid steer, we can move it ourselves, we're planning on getting salting equipment for the trucks, we can do our own salting and sanding here, because that gets contracted out now. So there's numerous stuff that we can't do ourselves. We, in the spring, we have a company come in, they sweep the parking lots, there's attachments for this, we can get our own sweeper, do it ourselves, and save money long-term.
What's the problem?
A skid steer? Oh, tremendously long. I, believe me, I know equipment. Maureen probably does as well.
That was in your capital plan, and we can discuss it later, but one of the items that could trip you over there.
Yeah, yeah. Again, my question was, I just didn't know why it was focused on the high school.
I'd like, I'd like somebody to identify where the nice round number of ten thousand dollars came from. You know, I hate round numbers.
Like nine, 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 nine. I think you have to talk around.
Is there any more savings that could be incorporated in that?
You know, Mark, to be honest with you, we, we don't have the piece of equipment, you know, we're assuming the capital plan will come in, we're assuming it will work the way we do, but I, I mean honestly, it's, it's new to us. We're hopeful, we would love it to provide more savings for us, and if it does, next year we'll be able to reduce the line item more, but at this point, it's, it's a bit of an unknown.
I actually don't operate one if we need somebody. I'm very versatile. I'm sorry, Mark.
Round number seven.
Thank you.
All righty. Any other discussion? I think we have a motion on this one. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Abstained? Okay. Thank you. Maintenance equipment.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
That gets us one percent below our original starting point from this evening. We're at two hundred and sixty-one thousand, ten dollars, I believe.
Ten dollars? Okay.
Yeah, there was that weird one, the four-ten up top, under two, twenty-three hundred?
Yeah. Okay. Maintenance equipment, production of musical instrument repairs, science equipment repairs, repairs always make the.
I make a motion not to accept line forty-two thirty-one.
I'll second for discussion. Any questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so five hundred dollars over a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars proposed budget. I mean, I appreciate that somebody made the effort to fight back, but evidently, and again, I don't support necessarily musical equipment cuts, but, and equipment repair, maintenance, when you cut those kind of things, you end up having to replace your equipment sooner. I, I think this is an item that I'd like to send back for rediscussion, to see if anything within that equipment line item could get us more significant cut out of it, but to even vote on the five hundred dollars in the scope of what we're talking about tonight, I think is moot. So, I would like the administration to bring the information back in March of perhaps what, either other equipment maintenance items could be either sent out or done in-house that might save a few more dollars, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Smart decision.
Any other discussion on that? And forgive me, do we actually have a motion on this one?
I made a motion not to accept.
Do we want to do that with the idea that administration will come back next? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Would you like me to rescind to table it?
No, we can just decline it now, they can go back. I just, can I just, I'm going to have to comment here. I was promising myself that I wasn't, but I can't believe that we're going to have
Would you like me to rescind to table it?
No, we can just decline it now, they can go back.
I just, can I just, I'm going to have to comment here. I was promising myself that I wasn't going to. But I can't believe that we're going to have the administration go back over five hundred dollars to try to find a few more, waste their time on that. We have way too many other things going on around here. Just if we're, if we're going to cut it, we're not going to cut it. It's five hundred bucks, let it go. Let them do their jobs.
When we get to the end, we have more cuts to cast.
It depends on what number the committee wants to get to. We could wait till we get to the end and you can decide if you feel like we've met our goal and then we can base it on that. I'd be happy to do whatever you'd like us to do.
So, Maureen, understood. At, at this point, did we actually vote that? I didn't think so. So let's vote it first rather than, we were talking about changing it. All those in favor of not accepting this at this time as, as Jason's motion? Are you asking questions or voting?
Voting.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You need to join the wave. You need opposed, abstained?
Yep, opposed, abstained. Everybody has a hand up. Acquisition of equipment.
Make a motion to accept the cut of fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars from line seventy-three thirty.
Seven seconds.
Discussion on that one? Okay, seeing then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Replacement of equipment.
Move to accept as presented.
Second.
Question. The middle school, where one of the items in here were those TI graphic calculators, do we actually buy, buy those calculators?
Well, you have some in the classroom.
The classroom set in algebra one courses.
Yeah, right.
They're expensive.
Obviously over time.
Yeah. I'm with you, I'm with you.
Haven't we all?
So I was, I was just saying that they were using our algebra in classes in the eighth grade and over time, the class sets some of the grades and we've had a bunch of years, so that's why it's on there, but obviously we can, you know, wait another year if we need to.
You know, the other thing I would suggest that KES and KIS teachers, I don't know how many of the teachers here, but a lot of them use the GoFundMe, buy a lot of. And I know they get all kinds of technology. I don't know if you guys use that here, but that might be another way. I mean, I hate doing this, but obviously we have to look at things that we want to cut.
Let's have a thought with the graphic calculators, when you said you bought four, how many of those are still used already?
How many of them are still in one piece?
But I feel like there's probably some out there.
Right, they may be donated.
But maybe we find out that, you know, people did buy.
I agree. Or chose not to. It doesn't have a price.
They are, but like if they go out and you're like, I've got a job.
Can we never, if this was student.
Oh, yeah.
Can we scrape up?
We have three class sets. What happened is over time, the class sets become dwindling and so what you have for function of calculators might be like eighteen, where originally it was twenty-five, because we've had them since before I've been there, believe it or not. And we have to replace them, so.
Yeah. I mean, they're expensive.
But we'll look at alternatives and that's why it's on there. We'll look at alternatives to making that happen.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
Jason, where are we at?
So I was hoping someone would ask me that.
I'd love to feed it to you, Jason.
We're currently at two hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars.
I concur.
I, I hope that we accept the potential tier one, not, not potential, the tier one cuts from the fiscal two thousand nineteen budget and stop here at two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
That is the focus.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to open it up for discussion.
I think that we've done a great effort. The administration has gone overboard as usual. It's heart breaking to see us even have to consider these cuts. And I represent the Silver Lake Regional School Committee from the town of Polster. And I believe that this is an educationally sound budget and that's why I'm running for reelection, to be here for the students of our district. I'm fiscally responsible for my town, I pay a lot of money in taxes as we all do. However, this is our future. This is our future.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Any other discussion? I, I want to go through the tier two. Because you're, is this in the budget by God? If they're in the budget, they haven't been taken out yet.
I think we should go through them.
There's a motion on the table, so I'm going to, is there any other discussion? The motion is to stop where we are now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
Stained.
Abstained. Did you get that?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
We clarify what, so we're.
Maureen?
Stopping after one or?
Stopping after one.
And not moving on to two at all?
Not moving on to two at all. And that's what our budget would be, other than you folks possibly just.
So, do we have any further discussion on that or not?
We're going to vote it again. Can we just, everyone who has, all those in favor of stopping at this point? All those in favor of stopping at this point? So you've got the full ones. All those opposed? And we got one abstained.
See?
What? So where is it? Didn't pass, wouldn't pass if I voted early? That's right, I want to, I think we owe the taxpayers a discussion.
Yes, we're going to continue. She's slanted.
So what do you have, Maureen, there?
Okay, so we're going to go on to tier two now. You certainly can.
Thank you. So even though I did not support stopping, I don't find anything further down the list necessarily appealing. But I think that for the benefit of the administration, having done the homework, that we should look at these items. And if you want to go through them one at a time, I personally won't be supporting any of them. But I think that it's important that we read them in and that we had that discussion because this is a budget meeting, not a, an ended discussion on this subject.
No, agreed. And, and the committee did agree to move forward going through these, so let's go through them again.
I also would like to hear anybody who's opposed to us keeping them, what they're doing.
Okay.
You want to know why we want to keep something?
Why get rid of it?
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion and we'll have individual discussions, please.
Well, Joy, do you want to chat about them at all, at a high level even? Because we had stopped at tier one, we had stopped superintendent at tier one.
So I'll, I'll just do a little bit of an overview and a lot of this has to do with instructional hardware software, which I, Steve was coming up to come this evening, so I'll look to him. So Steve, if you remember, came in and he talked about the four-year warranty on the Chromebooks and how it would save a tremendous amount of time with staff. Our goal would be that we would purchase the four-year lease and stop me at any point when I miss speech, I know I will, and that we would hopefully recollect that insurance from the parents. But what it would mean is it wouldn't involve the amount of time and effort our current tech staff is doing, but why don't you say it a little more coherently?
Okay, so specifically, right now we have one tech who's spending the majority of his time either fixing Chromebooks, shipping out Chromebooks for repair and putting them back. Four-year warranty would allow us to immediately, and it would be for incidental damage too, so if Chromebook gets dropped, yeah. You wouldn't believe what some of those Chromebooks have gone through. With those, with that series of Chromebooks coming in in the ninth grade, we end up sending them back to Dell, we'd have to replace or pack and within a week as opposed to the several weeks to months that sometimes the repair company can take getting in charge of. The advantage to that is maybe more time for the tech to do other things and it will put the, we have it back in the hands of the student center. We have a tremendous amount of loaners out right now and we often run out at student center. We may have to borrow one from someone else or. So that's the four-year warranty.
This is educationally sound, should we deepen the budget?
I can, if you're interested more in the numbers of these two broken cuts, I can give you more specifics as to what they are.
I'm sorry, Eric first, no, I apologize.
So, just to be clear, is this number, is this cutting some Chromebooks or just the warranty?
The first line, the seventy-two hundred and the thirty-seven four hundred, that's cutting just other hardware software and the one, the bottom number, the seventy thousand, eliminating the entire one.
Right, okay. And again, the, the warranty would only be for the new, the freshman coming in, this is not the warranty.
The hope would be that as they come in, first of all, it would be a little bit of a discount to the parents to buy the warranty through Dell and buying it every year for what they have, it would save them twenty-five to thirty-five dollars over the life of the warranty. If we were able to fully fund that, then that, the money could then go next year to pay for the four-year warranty for next year's Chromebook.
And this is for freshmen or for everybody?
It would be the freshmen starting out and then as we continue the program.
Okay, all right.
So the money coming in from this group would then go to fund the four-year warranty, so that it would eventually work its way through the system.
Okay.
If I might add to what I was just saying, I think, I think this would be a reasonable item and Finance Committee, if you guys don't mind listening to what I'm saying, I think that it sounds like purchasing the warranties through the budget rather than parents going directly to the warranty companies, yes, the cost to us right off the bat, like he said, but then the parents instead of paying the warranty companies, they'll then pay the school, which will then fund, like he just said, next year's.
Did you want to finish?
No, I think he knows what I was going to say.
Okay. Gordon, I'm going to ask you to wait one moment, Mark.
So, the idea is to have an incentive program so that our parents go for the four-year plan, so that we can front-load the cash back into this program, so it's almost a zero item. And Steve presented, I had a discussion earlier with him about this, a meeting that I couldn't make, and he explained it very well. As long as there's an incentive not to go year by year, that we try to front-load this with each class coming in buying a four-year plan.
And there's one other factor that you should consider too, and that is that there are a certain percentage of parents who may not be able to afford the warranty, which we make exceptions for. In those cases, when the Chromebook gets damaged, we end up basically absorbing the cost of the repairs. And that can often be more than the warranty, this would then cover those as well.
Could I just ask, Steve, how much is the actual warranty out of this?
Twenty. The estimate is approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars out of that.
So if you were interested in making some of the cuts, if we kept the twenty-eight thousand, if we still keep the warranty, and that's under the high school only?
And I do have the whole breakdown of all, what these numbers represent that I.
Gordon?
So, is this really a one-time capital item? That will be more of a revolving account that you're looking at, where it's a one-time fund for this and as the money for the next class comes in, you'll have the money to do the warranty for the following class? Because that's what it sounded like.
From a, from a financial standpoint, in my mind, I think that makes sense, but from a financial standpoint, I can't speak to any of that because I don't know about that.
But it sounds, it sounds like it's a one-time spend to put the money out there to get the warranties.
And then you capture it back.
And then you're going to capture it back from the parents, so it's more like a revolving. We might not capture it a hundred percent. Yeah, I understand. That's what it sounds like more of. So is, is this really?
You're using word revolving account and we, that's a little bit different then.
Okay, so, but you don't see this as a recurring expense?
I don't see it as twenty-eight thousand dollars every year to buy a four-year warranty because, in my mind, I would see it being recouped in large part this year and then it will be whatever the difference will be.
So, so, question I would have to the committee is, can you include this in your capital expense for this year to get that program going and remove it from the operating side? So that allows you to take?
I don't think I'm going down that road.
Because if it's just a one-time cost, if it's twenty-eight thousand dollars this year and it's a three thousand dollar operating cost, you know, if that's an estimated number that you got three thousand dollars for parents that can't afford it, it would just seem to me that this, that would give you the ability to offer the warranty, take it out of the operating side.
Yes, I see your point now. Do you have a rebuttal on that one, Mark?
Well, when Steve had explained it to me, it was pretty much a zero-cost item if we got everybody to buy it for the four-year plan or most of them.
But it straddles over two budget seasons.
Right.
It's zero sum over two budget seasons.
Over two budget seasons.
Yeah.
Correct. But the first upload, the twenty-eight, when you realize the personnel and the postage we're spending, there's another fact, factor that is included in the new program, Mike. Steve?
Yes, sir.
So right now, that post, your postage budget is paying for all these to be shipped, both ways or one way?
I don't know if, I believe the number covers shipping, both of them and they ship them back.
Right, so we're going to have a reduction in postage line item also just, and I don't know how much that is, but everyone mails out, because the warranty includes the postage when, when they buy the new one.
Okay, so that takes postage down, is what you're saying? Okay.
It's actually coming out of the repair line.
I don't know on tear. What are the committee's thoughts on what Gordon suggested, that we put that number in the capital? Go ahead.
We've done that in Kingston against my, for many years, taking a lot of IT items out of our operating budget to get our budgets down to where the town needs us to be and putting those items over there. So, Chris, you would look at our Kingston budget this year and say, what happened with your IT? You just went up a huge number. Well, we didn't because we've been taking it out. One of the dangers with that is putting it into a separate capital, capital plan, whether the town would, would approve that or not. Kingston, they always do, because Finance Committee is typically behind that and that's, it's worked well. Here we have three towns, so you put it, take it out of this budget, put it into, you know, capital plan. For one year and it, it doesn't get approved and it's out of this budget, that, that would be my concern going to town meetings. You know, I can speak to Kingston, I think Kingston would approve it. I have no idea how it happens and what it would, and we would just obviously need one town, I believe, with capital plan.
It's one.
You don't agree?
We move and you want this to two.
Two. So that would be one of my concerns and also then taking technology items out of your budget, which then in later years, it was superficial, superficially, as if it's been increasing and it's not. Again, that's just man's business.
Go ahead. I was just going to mention that previously our capital plan is a primarily fixed asset type item to the longer life. And this doesn't meet that criteria, the committee could make a decision to, just with choice going forward. Traditionally, it's in those type of fixed asset items that have a longer life.
Agreed. I think it's an interesting consideration.
Based on what Christine just said, I agree with that. I think it wants.
Could you speak up, please?
I can't hear you, John.
All right. Because of what Christine just said, I agree that this doesn't want a capital plan.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, business. And the additional IT equipment that Kingston has been funding the schools, local schools, we have not treated it as capital either. We have been funding it through some town funds, but not capital.
But thank you, Gordon, I, I appreciate that.
Was the intent for parents to pay one time freshman year for the four years or did they have the option to pay a little bit each year over the course of four years? Because I think that would impact.
Yeah, they.
The return of funds as well.
They can, but the incentive would be there for the go-four years. And the reason we want that incentive there is so, so that we can front-load this fund and have the money forward to make, to pay the bill.
Well, that's true. Can you add it to the pocket piece? Just add one more fee.
Give you the Chromebook and the card and you pay.
Then you're all set.
Thank you.
You know, for parents that can do it, I'll be honest with you, taking out insurance, there was a year I completely forgot. It just, the one year, a piece of paper came home and then a piece of paper didn't come home.
And so, if I could pay it my freshman year and not have to worry about it, because they take some serious abuse, as you even said. So, that's just one town.
So, where are we at?
Do we make a?
We have, we've been just talking about.
We're not gonna pull late buses.
Pulling Chromebooks.
Want me to move, move any of the three lines?
So, I made this one question. For the middle school proposed cuts, and Steve, what were you proposing in cutting from the middle school? Exactly, the 7,200?
So, in this line, we would be looking at cutting another $1,000 out of the repair budget for the middle school. Software and software school management. One of the things that the library at the middle school asked was converting the library management system from the current library world that she uses now to fall into destiny. That is used at the elementary schools and it's used at the high school. What that would allow us to do is a student's book history would then flow through from K to 12. That's 3,200, taking another $2,000 supplies, and then another $1,000 out of system technology.
Are you covered?
What were those cuts? Um, when, when I first asked for the cuts, I did Phase 1, which was, you know, impact but not severe. This, I would say, would be more of a major impact, everything in these two lines for the middle school, high school.
Yeah, I personally would be against cutting the 7,200. And then at the high school, I would want to keep the $28,000, but the remainder of that, is it those similar items?
Uh, there are at the, back on the Tier 1 at the middle school level, we eliminated some replacement printers, but we had also replaced a lot of printers at the previous year. At the high school, that would be eliminating three replacement printers, which we have not replaced in a long time. So, the high school tends to print more to copiers, but there are certain areas like sped staff, certain specialty printers that the copiers are less desirable to use for. So, if you're printing an IEP, you don't want to pop it out, but something grabbing it. Also, at the high school, it would be eliminating, we talked about the Chromebooks. In the Phase 1, we eliminated a couple of, there are three coordinator laptops that are very old and becoming non-functional. Two of the coordinators would be able to use Chromebooks, so we eliminated that. Tier 1, this would be eliminated, third one, for replacement. And then cutting another $4,000 from supplies at the high school.
So, you could swap, based on what you said, I wouldn't want to cut any of those items. I think, I think they're all important. The $4,000 from supplies, I mean, for me, I mean, do you think that you could live without those $4,000? Or do you need the $4,000?
Um, we can live without anything. It's, to be honest with you, we will make it work and we will do the best we can.
But you need to have the equipment to do your job.
It's hitting the uncomfortable level.
Right.
To be honest with you, that, maybe sitting again, for me, but obviously, if you're talking cutting this, this is cutting staff or cutting personnel.
I would make a motion right now that we don't face any of these cuts for $24.50, but that's just me.
Second.
When you say any of these cuts, you're talking about $24.50, okay, just $24.50?
Yeah.
Okay. And it was seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I'd like to move to leave the transportation line item the way it is for the late buses.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
I'd like to move the Chromebooks to stay as they are, also.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained?
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Good idea. Just one thing, this does not have to be a cut specifically. Christine did ask.
It was a request last night after.
We are working our way slowly through the mess. We are hoping to get the phone systems where it'll exist sometime in the next few weeks, which should start reducing our telephone costs. It's been a logistical nightmare dealing with some of the fax lines and the line lines, trying to figure out, well, we have this number with Verizon, where does it go? We, because there's no real documentation, Verizon tells you, it comes into the building. Certain lines can't be converted, can't convert elevator lines, can't convert fire alarm. So, we're just trying to work our way through what we're having in the process of converting the first major line, hopefully within the next few weeks. So, we should start to see that coming back to us.
Okay, and I guess, is there any estimate of what we should start seeing coming back to us?
Honestly, off the top of my head, I don't even remember what the numbers on the phone numbers are. But one of the estimates the phone company provided to us is that when it's all said and done, we should start seeing at least 40% savings.
About a 40% savings. But they're delaying it so painfully long, I'm not sure my grandchildren may see.
Right. And true, it's not the company that did the phone system, it's million dollars.
Yeah. Steve, I guess, I'm not gonna prolong the budget discussion tonight on this budget. Can this be escalated? I mean, what, it, what I think I've been hearing is, and this is not against you, it's Verizon, please don't think it's against you. They're dragging their feet, we're not moving this along, therefore, we're not seeing 40% savings. How can we get this escalated so that this starts to move?
Excuse me, Paul. Previously in the meeting, you said this wasn't a discussion about the budget for tonight, and I wonder if we could put this off until our meeting, which is next week? I'd like to continue with this, the budget process. And I apologize, Steve, I understand you're here to discuss the telephone.
I'm sorry, Maureen, what was that?
It's not part of the current budget discussion, and I wondered if we could wait and do it at our regular meeting next week, since this is a budget topic?
I just thought, well, Steve was here.
Yes, I understand that, and I apologize to Steve for that. But we're also all here on an extra night.
Yes, yes, we are.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next section of Tier 2.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, I've been on the committee for four years now, and several times when we've suggested program additions to the budget, we've been asked by the towns, what programs are we eliminating? We finally have had some movement with retirements that have eliminated some positions and some programs. And these are not new additional staffing requests. These are new, modernized programs that are required to keep up with some mental health, social, emotional initiatives, and also to keep current with STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics. You know, initiatives that the state has put on us through mandates that have been unfunded by them. And I am not in favor of removing any of these items from the middle and high school draft Tier 2 staff adjustments. That is a motion, yes.
Second. Okay, discussion?
Sure. I know I'm new to the process, but I'm trying to see the paperclip analogy, and try to fit it in here, I think. We just said no reduction to those three line items in Tier Budget 2, potential cuts for $117,000 at the high school and $16,000 at the middle school. I think, in looking back and having experienced the budgets, doing those kind of cuts just a little late. You know, we may not do $100,000, these Chromebooks this year, and we're gonna be cutting them. If we did, then next year, we're probably gonna come back and do it. The books fit that same path, where we cut books in the budget, and now we're coming back. And if they're that much older, that much worse condition, if they're fewer of them than I lost, we can now increase the budget at a larger pace. So, I'm looking at this from a structural standpoint of almost everything we put down in terms of principal's office or library, audio visual, whatever the cuts were, may need to be reinstated later on. And I don't know if the towns are later gonna have growth to support that. I think we've been in this kind of pickle with schools and the budgets and the towns for several cycles now, where if they don't have growth in the town to support, oh, we gotta have money this year. I think every year, this committee, probably those that have been here a while, experienced that. Every year, we gotta, we gotta make everything work what we got. And the trend is less students, as sort of the report I saw on here said. Coming through over the next few years, we're getting less state funding. Naturally, if we just keep a dollar-for-dollar equal, then it's the assessments of towns. So, I'm just trying to make a point here that we really haven't made the multi-year cuts, I guess. Because some of these printers we don't do this year, we'll have to do next year. So, I don't think I agree with necessarily maintaining or not reducing the staff adds, I think they're adds, going forward, because these are more many years.
They're program adds, replacing programs that we will no longer have. And it's not staff adds, because we would have lost these people, it would have been an attrition move. And these are programs we've been trying to put into the curriculum for our students for several years now. And the towns retort is always, then we'll show us what you're cutting in order to get these in.
Right, right.
And I think we're at that point finally. Right. The Allied Health does bring in the Chapter 74 funds. It's also one of the programs that CTE can speak to that will hopefully attract more female students. And it can also attract students who could go directly into career or transition back into the AP program and end up going to college to get their nursing license, so.
And also students from other towns.
Yeah, I mean, I think those, I'm not as educated on, but the big picture looking at the cut. He was deferring expenses later on, which doesn't fit with the decrease in student body and budget constraints based on salaries and healthcare costs and everything else. And we're making near the open 6, 8, 10%.
To some extent, it's sort of a shuffle or a realignment of a pool of money and how it's allocated, to some extent. But I do hear you, and there's a sustainability issue clearly. You know, the next few years are gonna be even tougher, we think. You know, last year was tough, this year's even tougher, next year's extremely tough. Having said that, and I do have one more comment, you want us to say something else?
I was just gonna say, in terms of, you know, these items, I think, you know, like with the Adjustment Counselor, when you look at what happened in Florida, I mean, the youth today, there's a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of autism, there's a lot of needs of our, you know, younger population, and people are constantly saying, we need, you know, we should spare no expense. And you look at discussions going on now, people are saying we need to do fundraisers to put, you know, blocks in front of every door, and, you know, we shouldn't be sparing any expense to protect our kids. Well, part of that is, an Adjustment Counselor is very much, it's not a bar in front of the door, but the way it probably acts like a lot better than that. And, you know, the same with the Bright program, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
You are.
The Allied Health features is slightly different, that's, but that could also bring in revenue in terms of tuition to the students. So, I don't see that, you know, I see that as potentially not just a great program for our kids and to keep them here instead of charter schools. But the Adjustment Counselor and the Bright program, I see that as, you know, protecting our kids in a really changing world and changing needs of young kids.
I still would like to go through, oh, I'm in support of keeping all of this, but I think we should go through it line by line, so that anybody present can tell me why we shouldn't spend this money on these things. Just so that anybody that adjusts to it. I don't need members.
Hold the first one.
I'm talking about members in the audience.
Jason?
Just want everybody to know where we are too. Okay, so, we cut $291,257. And if my math is correct, our current increase of the total budget would be 2.78%.
Is that accurate?
I did not track that, I was tracking the total.
I did in my head, and I came up with 2.8, so I'm gonna say yes.
Okay.
I agree with that. Thanks for checking, you guys.
I'm gonna ask one question if I can, and I'm not asking for the whole Bright overview you provided us. But what percentage of the student population will benefit from that program? I understand the environment, the climate we're in, et cetera. I'll be honest with you, my fear is, I'm looking forward to next year. And that's one that I think supporting that next year is, you know, maybe gonna cost us something on the, on another side, so I just wanna make sure.
Wait, what do you mean? I don't understand the phrasing of your question about costing us on the other side. I just, I wanna know what you mean by that.
You're talking about the Bright program?
Right, if we, if we implement that, next year, it, you know, I believe the, you know, the economy's gonna shrink us a bit further. We're gonna have to make a harder, we're gonna have to make another decision next year. So, if I, I don't wanna put this in for one year.
Paula, we're three years late on putting this program in.
Exactly.
This, we are behind the eight ball. This is not, can we wait one more year? We've already waited too long. This program can't wait. We're having students who come in and out from mental health hospitalizations, and they're put back into the classrooms, and the teachers do the best they can, but they're not trained to deal with that kind of milieu, with these students. And it ends up, those students have to go back out more often. We can't keep them here in their own community, in their own school. With this program, there's that buffer between the teachers and reintegration into the schools, so those students can integrate at a pace that's healthy for them, manageable, so they end up staying. And this is reducing the mental health issues that our students will face. This is also used by kids who have concussions. Let's look at how many kids, athletes have had concussions. They can't be in rooms with smart boards, they're not supposed to look at their Chromebook. They can't be, you know, taking tests and quizzes at the same pace. And this room can also be utilized for those students. And then the third tier, the most recent tier of students who are using the Bright program, are kids who are coming back with medical complications to Lyme's disease. Because they're having some really psychoactive results with Lyme's disease now, that's devastating, scary, and medicine doesn't even know how to deal with it. But the Bright program, this, this room, a transition room, a Zen room, whatever you wanna call it, whether we adopt Bright fully or we just get some ideas and clues from them, is gonna benefit our kids to the point that it's not even worth us discussing it. Ned, I understand why you started this and you got me going, but.
No, I just want anybody here who has spent money.
Right. I absolutely think that we have a moral obligation to put this program in place.
I agree. Well, Jason, you got to my God, so. Thank you.
But Jason, I just wanna reiterate, I support these things.
I know you do.
You know I do.
I know you do.
And I'd just like anybody here to justify any of the reasons that they should be cut.
My concern would be this type of a program is taking away from the everyday average student that doesn't need a lot of additional.
Who's an average student?
Exactly.
Wow.
The 90% that don't need this program.
Oh, my God.
Can you identify who those 90% are right now?
What if it was your kid?
You're completely off on your.
What if it was your kid?
I'm just making my opinion.
And he has a right to his opinion.
We have our right to retweet.
Oh, I'm not.
And you didn't recognize anyone in the audience, Steve?
I know I did, Maureen, I, do you want me to go over and bump them on the head?
Yes, I would, actually.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
Well, I just wanted to say that the district I work in implemented the Bright program for the first time this year, and it has been wildly successful. And one of the comments that I heard from our middle school, which is where the program was implemented, is they had sort of anticipated who might need the program coming in. And of the students that have participated in one way or another in the program, more than half of them are students that they did not anticipate needed it. So, even the, you know, regular students, you just don't know who's going to need this kind of support, so.
It's by definition, it's a regular rate program.
We need it so badly.
Okay, I'd just like to speak from my days as a scoutmaster and having to deal with kids that have concussion issues. The concussion line item here, to me, totally supports this program, just from that line item alone. And we have kids that were in the top 10%, top 4% of their class, that got involved with a concussion issue, were delayed coming back to school months because they weren't handled correctly, coming back to school in that transition program. And you cannot replace time in a classroom or time in your school system.
Or time healing that break?
It is, and this, I mean, all of these items speak exactly to the mission of the Silver Lake School Committee. The Allied Health situation, I know I'm going off subject, but that's, our job is to prepare students to leave this institution with employable skills. And that particular line item speaks more to that than mountains of the things we hear do. With the local environment, these are employable kids walking right out the door. We can't give any of our kids a better program than the health science program.
I suspect that, I don't want, I'm not looking at the names, I'm looking for a percentage of the population of the school students in all encased in Halifax and the region that are IEPs, disabilities, because I believe they wouldn't fit into his explanation of a normal student at a 9%.
If I may, I was just gonna, if I could just, not necessarily answer Ed's question, I apologize, but I wanted to speak too a little bit about why we wanted to bring the Bright program in. It's really a cost savings for our district. Some of these students who are unable to come into class, again, remember, we're legally obligated to educate these students. So, we have to pay for tutoring services. We have to pay for what we call Fuel, which is an online educational program. We have tutors who go to their homes. We have students who come in and out of hospitalizations and are missing a tremendous amount of school and often end up. We have students who come in and out of hospitalizations and are missing a tremendous amount of school and often end up in a placement. I mean, we do have students that we believe if we had gotten this program last year or the year before, that we would not have some of our out of district costs that I know the towns are struggling with. So I, I realize that this may be difficult, the numbers may be small, but they are somebody's child and, you know, that's our job, is to educate everybody's child and also to provide the best services and to keep our students in school and to give them the supports and a safe place. You know, again, our goal and our focus in this budget is meeting the needs of diverse learners. You know, that's really what all of our programs have been, is to stay focused on the students. This is a program that I really do believe we need, you know, we've invested a lot of time looking at it. I think the savings will be astronomical in terms of what it will mean to our students and I think also in terms of some students potentially wouldn't be able to stay with us without these resources. And again, this is a regular education program, I really do want to stress this. This is not designed for special education, this is a regular education program. Not that a child couldn't access it if they were on a special education plan, but this is designed for regular education students. So it's, it's a different program than some of the other ones that we may have presented.
Go ahead, and then I, I want to make one comment.
You should go first because I want to close the discussion.
Okay, I don't disagree. We may have to stand in front of town meetings supporting a number that the towns don't want us to. We have, one second, Maureen. We just developed a narrative, perhaps I would call it, if we could capture this conversation and pull it and put it in bullet points. This was a wonderful discussion and it should be argued, very similar to the passionate way you just did in your comments. We may have to stand in front of town meeting and give that scenario, give that basis. I'll have to in Halifax probably. So I think this discussion is the basis for supporting this in town meeting if we don't walk in with the absolute support of those that, you know, kind of help us push these things through. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, well said. I appreciate you leading us through this budget discussion again this year with the grace like you did last year.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close the discussion on this budget.
Second.
Okay, do you have a comment?
I have a question first. All right?
Oh, no.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm new to these four pieces bottom, so I just heard that the Allied Health teacher and the Bright program would actually be cost savings. Do we have any clue where that would be savings or, or revenue on the, on the Allied Health side? Because we look at these as a cut, and maybe it's not a cut, maybe it's an add that, like you said, creates revenue, creates savings. Where do the savings come from? I'll be all for it.
Well, I'm not sure if it saves. So, if I may, for Allied Health, we receive something called a Perkins Grant. The idea is we would fund half the cost of the teacher until the program is approved through Chapter Seventy-four. Once that's approved, we receive additional revenue for the students. The additional revenue should be able to support the cost of the teacher. And then if we don't, if I, we've had lengthy discussions about this, it's going to be hugely popular, wildly popular. If we did have slots not filled by our own Silver Lake students, we would have the ability to tuition and perhaps capture students that are going someplace.
That's what I meant, it's not really a cost, or we can sort of put any of the material that got, I'm guessing, that the net positive or the net zero. But the other one, where would the savings come from? Would be, as you said, tutors somewhere else in the budget line?
So in addition.
You're back on the Bright?
I'm back on the Bright, yeah, sorry.
So one of the cost savings does come from tuition and our Fuel Education, which is an online program for students who aren't able to come to school and be in the building. One of the bigger savings is, as we look at the data over the last couple of years of students who have benefited from this program, there are up to five, if not more, students who are currently on an out of district placement at approximately fifty thousand dollars each year who would have benefited from this program and because of the success of this program, would have been able to go back into the classroom and stay with us. So, five kids right now that I, that I can think of, that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that, that saves the district. In addition to it being just the right thing to support these students who are in crisis right now.
And some of what happens, just to follow on Michaela, once a student's out, it's not always easy for a student to come back because they become invested in the program they're in, the family becomes invested in the program they're in, but it would hopefully keep our students currently here from having more out of district placements. So we believe it would provide savings down the road, not necessarily some of the students Michaela mentioned coming back. Because once they're out, it is difficult, especially in high school, for them to necessarily come back. They establish different friends, they have social.
Can I ask a follow up?
Yes.
Is, for the Bright program, is fifty-five thousand enough to fund, as I understand, a full-time clinician and a full-time academic coordinator?
So.
Two, two people at less than thirty grand each.
We, what we're looking for is to fund the Adjustment Counselor because we have personnel in-house that we could use to fund the academic support person.
So this is just with a clinician then?
Mm-hmm.
And then the, the last item, the treasurer one, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that one.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just those two.
Yeah, if the treasurer gets creative, they can design new lines of, of generation and it could be a cost savings.
I think we have a motion on the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained? This was not an easy discussion and I thank all of you for participating to the passionate level that you have.
Anybody want to sit around for a couple of these presentations?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I'm trying to answer one question.
Okay.
I, I apologize. May I answer a question?
Go ahead.
I just want to be sure, we had a shared cost position on the back page, I just wanted to be sure if I was clear. So at this point, you're not interested in us looking at that item?
I thought we were going through the whole list now. That's what, that's what Ed said he was going to do.
No, that was on the last page, we can get to the last page.
And I feel nobody wants to talk about the staff that planned a night going to that.
No, it's not only the gender record. Motion to adjourn.
Was made by.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
We're in the regulation.